Ya l'udahul silsra adhurtin special session ra House of Delegates olbi rahlulaw amomu la reyal tutau cel full state wa kada akortial baimura order ueera domu ra order obisite sigirial tutau gurgitabekla abo dutel eple bolabaga adama gadegundu ueera ueera domu ra program gid. Okay, clerk, amorul kon.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Delegate Arura, delegate Gibbons Junior, delegate Culibert, Flor leader Kanai, delegate Komsom, delegate Marino.
M'atiang.
Vice Speaker Ngiraiwet, delegate Miratka Kanai, delegate Ongidoble.
Oi.
Delegate Otobdo, delegate Lulgo, delegate Sinzak.
Oi.
Delegate Solablay.
Oi.
Delegate Talley.
Oi.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oi.
Mister Speaker, ngarya kurum.
Egi dengarya kurumea a delegate ra angiwal Arura bangara ba ngarya alseun modiyakl sebelmei direktel delegate oror amungura omte ra House of Delegates ngara cel e pap webe rigidad direktel momarag akapsengel mori. A delegate Kanai mngarya a prior committee meting modiyakl sebelmei including ra Flor leader ma delegate ra Otobdo. Tigarro guya eksiust e segidengarya kurum akmarengasugnul beklaab kada dikme dukdu domu ra Christmas ilbu ya December, Christmas time dikmarengasugnul nosu yulmei e olnit ra delegate ngayangal bol omte ergid omte ra acting Flor leader ra House of Delegates e bol omseur gidil lo m'kraer el al l'urere der al kotul silsya tiya special session. Delegate Komsom.
Vice Speaker amalungututau morgau ma vice speaker ma beklaab kada almolmara uweren kudiraqra atsen ngargid endiak ngara one and mora atri e di mora journal calendar item four ngarya differer ngargi ma mobile differa full state journal ra 12 regular session.
Segida m'uson el difer cel full state journal ra 12 regular session emla segedet tigel goonge bol du oi omtok yanga emla so differ Flor leader.
Almolm speaker, m'adora item five kada omeseng ngarya malbeto kel communication emra obisra president emer gid ya malbeto nga ngara calendar gid direktel nga senate communication ma bo do one by one aikal misa des speaker kada malkolata m'arriya okia kel gid a direktel btoka wa nga full reading ma resolution sel malbeto omdi goni trar bekel members ma not aikel communication ra ba president nga ba obisra president emer item five note e gid almolm m'ora item eight cel senate communication direkt losi siul onnit speaker malbeto aikang abo direktel tokaringa bo entretener bo ra calendar resolution ma abils ma di not aikigid direktel senate communication ra item eight malbeto ke speaker omseendentika formation ra members ra commissions aikel e almolm speaker emora item 12 for a full reading ma mobile ilpas ra Housepin number 11 thus 126 thus 13 S.
Segida m'uson m'ala cel bidra full reading emla segedet. Clerk, am iwea taitol.
Housepin number 11 thus 126 thus 13 S. Ya l'udahul da sunmola amomlot ra title 41 rapala national code dan mo onoseiya contribution da individual ma employer emora medical savings fund el 2.5% dan mo 3.5% ma rukte bebi ra ngodlomso del ya l'udahul da sunmola able introducinga delegate Arura maruptoy sel delegates.
Segida ala taitol lamui yu tiya mal clear etu siptaime ya ndibusa chair woman ra held akmo askra delegate ngayul vice a chairman ndibuski da overview niit tiang ed asaningi ma kamitira held. Delegate ngayul. Oh, services. Adobe sa taime mal tentori e kada mutl kontinua a session rigid m' Flor leader dangam resteta m'uson edu.
Ful vice speaker, ma mobile pas ra Housepin number 11 thus 1 126 thus 13 S.
Segi, oi. Segidil emla segedet m'igel goonge bol vice el du oi.
Oi.
Omtok. Lamoa isem la delegate ngayul gamora di explain ra tiya albi ra.
Speaker amalungututau mergau ma bekel delegates speakere ndibusa tiya albi la viceegil viceonamui taitol ngil mo amend ra la mo increase a percentage emora la contribution al al emora medical savings fund from 2.5 to 3.5% tiang able introducinga taqal delegate ra blur ngiwal speaker ndibus ma chairman agamitid direktel ndibus ngaga vice chairman agamitim ra held ma e di moaisa setiya posel bil speaker l'utbidi atnaqal delegate Arura mohtegri ngaya emlas miloseng mosbe edel tiya alpanda btox ega kontinuu la gal bol m'tamal la ta taam speaker ma suel ngaru baga olnit l'osse bol sube edel omesengi emora agamitim study ngi e omes l'osse bol sube edel increase segidil 2.5 ra 1% bol 3.5 bol sube l'ega kontinuu speaker fanda tiya gid program tiya program l'almolm ngari l'altaame g'mtengi l'ossea maximum ra a fand speaker gibautan adu ifap tausen e di a costa m'alamal mo abis speaker ma ngarui de telara a ueer sel bol l'amant taorul uspe ngaya alsmeara restal alsmeara speaker m'ndi onnit l'osse bol elut l'omesengiye l'omesakir sube el mo 3.5 mal kontinuu program l'molm speaker emsula tealk.
Sula e vice chairman ra held muska teal e delegate abliliu.
Sula e speaker amalvitutau le gorgau ma bekel adoro gui speaker nga abliliu omeset tiang e tianga malungil bil e speaker len adobe sa tokor a ogurul ma tokor agan ospital emna masaral e kada egid e gil program emral girad emre edel lolngas emngongosseur ra adrelaw m'ngsebaril mogutmok la aegidil adel mosme la dimosmele ma ospital e ngara egid adi gurgitani speakera adobe sa tiya l'governmenten malungil la omorolel aripablik e adobe sa blab elgo emla blil malungile mori ngado ma gurgitel ga speaker kwa se matalakl se e bol sube el ebo m'se mosikrolele e bo du sabsa daish ra telgibit tiang l'oba audo ra government speaker, sula e speaker.
Sula, kabo e delegate angaro.
Speaker, sula ngaha direktel du bu tiya l'udasa sela gida degur risentlik demle mitlo bantri tigal adra ayah tigal longara tiya tigingela ogurul belaw emno malsoal waseng ngari awal olongosong sa oguntir m'gid a tiya agundasa intente tiya l'udasa waseng diakasawal al m'osha atingela ogurul belaw l'mo metro len namo yagado kada domes aigel cases of referral patients etiramor of island rosi ga ogurul en anambri ngaya domes ringimakto ma gamdangli tiya tokor a cancer speaker sel domeset tiang demle increase ngi ra dorifat 173,000 allowing it for two years period ma anybody il mo ogurul a cancer of force aigal treatment ter ngi it's gonna take a long time direktel vice wad logip tegid l'udasu e bol sube ira adra healthcare direktel mo attention attil ngarya gu cases a wa heart tigel emora wa bypass ma direktel mal expensive ma gombaral wasa timing etel l'udasu el change tiya 2.5 to 3.5 ngarya bo ngosue tiya program direktel ader belaw kontinuu to benefit family after all le se amne intente l'osing aigal contribution rigid l'mosois bol bol sube el rospi el gukmal aigel cases ngaya adiaga trir bol ra sela blur belaw. Sula e speaker.
Sula, kabo e delegate ra angaro.
Oi, sula teal e speakere gira goni timel baragamitil util mo kora mo kmal awamso del a ngaa ukti misa de sel financial aspect tri omeset tiang ege tiya dimasad ra sel MSF gira madil waset tiya ngarya sel underparty isi tiya 2.5% ta diaal sel adre ngelela employer ra direktel contributing oi, bolungil e speaker musange bolungil musangel sengsel amrangel sengsel bodo ngi kado kora kwa se m'kitau ukti dulea on present ra itsel say del bol ngosongosong momedel ngidil kora mori omsodel bodo niyatu ma entretene ngi embelaril m'ola ebo ngarselfie giril ilinaf sebe el teikera aigal ngasaklela arala ogurul ma garit segida di on tikma October 7 we tinga bo do saal den ilmo di te. Sula teal.
Yang o shekid 2.5 ngarya hamterpartingi 2.5 provided by the employer tiagora di om'kbitang. Oi kabo.
Speaker tiya dimasad segidil MSF m'ngutiang ukti segidil bitang a lo saal den ngi sel bitang emora employera tiak direktel bol mo esegid edesan. Sula teal.
Na kisi al du elagad mora segedu kabo e delegate angaro.
Acti mobre de speaker emblaktakl gira madige sel contribution ra employ employera matseri malsoo m'omo 3.5 etamatseri la 3.5 li swadal make sure understand aigel concern Ongidoble emral girad el vivisit tiya make sure kada cover aru gui le tiya diakal tiaklob l'gold program me gid al al belaw.
Kabsula, tigel tigel goonge m'depas tiya full reading edu oi. Omtok. Tianga lamnga e asan emora kamitira held. Oi. Flor leader.
Vice speaker, almolm m'g'dangar sel 12 ra 2 mobile pas ra Housepin number 11 thus 127 thus 13 S.
Segida m'uson m'ala sel bidra full reading emla segedet. Am iwea taitol.
Housepin number 11 thus 127 thus 13 S. Ya l'udahul da sunmola am omaktu ra procedures el gila omotmaklela constitutional conventions lol tirakra Arigol 14 section one ragimpo ra blur belaw ma rukte bebi ra ngodlomso del ya l'udahul da sunmola able introducinga delegate Solablay maruptoy sel delegates.
Segida taitol lamui etianga malblaktakl ngawulang umsa amend introducendo kora amtengtiya ueera alwa adongu ra full reading. Kabo e delegate abliliu.
Sula e speakere etiya d'ulmesengi rogui direktel lobengela adra la argid direktel misa sel lastel constitutional convention emla ngi ra 2005 e malgantangatale ngarya terul ngarxed lobengela altaime a delegate ra omil blur la imlig ma a delegate ra amalungil blur la toobe emle member akme m'adu ra ollega doctor Solablay ngi direktel emle member ma direktel btokel adra naset taime bebir aral de speaker omeset tiya constitutional cee sela alorur ngi kanbin na 2005 constitutional convention astey tamloado du emkomaltog aigel kemlebrin atetelel endiak ngalul constitutional blur belaw mallotak Arigol Arigol 14 ra section two akula se sel lombokodonga constitutional convention e m'bornia l'ul e gil l'ul a olbi rahlulaw amogutmok e segidil me diakam magutmok e omesel adra la emwa se aikang asumendiak ngalul e diakal magutmok e mo krol toko e tigamulala e albornia kora disa element ra adro ngi osen magadaseet tiang en m'omtamal tiya gid l'ungil toko ilgirela convention l'mo merur gid e gid speakera du kado a magutmok tiang e omesengi speaker e we shegid e klo tutelel m'ngtiagida abil le adu du e magutmok ngi e gutmakli ma tianga malgi ngo giwa constitutional blur belaw a olbi rahlmodikual moruli tiya gid l'ul a ka constitutional convention sel l'mo ul tiya gid malblaktakl m'la magutmok e m'omrgol kwa l'mrgor ngil kula se a lastel every 15 years once every 15 years embornia constitutional convention bulgula kwa se nserel mo btokel etiaga once at least 15 years e di a tokor a la adulmes e omesengiye owololo ngel e di shegidil magodong ra sela six months emral girela ngari shegidil laal bodo dodo da ngiye ermurtra uwerel tiya l'toora gan convention ma tiu l'mo shegid e speaker adra la argid amlo mes la la e diakal la la emer altaime ma luti tigid a badol toba den ngi ma altoba den ngi e ngar shegidil tetelel emrgon kwa se eber sel domes at 2005 emer elang m'la mo 18 years m'la obe ra 15 years endiak gan constitutional convention e g'miamdangli tiya tokor a amendement l'mora constitution a tril b'dangel ngara constitutional convention sel gotu ngir roguil bekel adro gui me emngil temem saal den ngi balubanga popular initiative ngara blur almor tiengi gutmakli balubanga legislative initiative gus ta egil tablonga ngara da a toko kais amblur di tiya gidil gan convention gidela bekel adro belaw emer ngi domeset sel se tinga sel m'loarek etu 16 members representa 16 state emrgon nine members at large delegate di tiya constitutional speakera gotul sisi l'ul belaw klo tutelel e bodo dodo da ergi e adobe singi kwa se tigel at large sel bilingil telmo ngungil di tegi tomte aral ngaran speaker astey ta toba da adre ngi e sel le mengoba tigingela astey emsaal da egil tigingela a blur for example nga adra abliliu akme akme l'mesaal tigingela abliliu e gau speaker adra ngesar ome kwa se tokor ngesar e tegid at large selirut alse siad adre setiak tomte eti al belaw tiang a xmal di mo shegid kwa se a astey tamodisay kwa se at least ten tool member e di tiya degu moa agamiti ma asumenguk sodal mo sel continuation rapivius e agamiti asel disay e gutmakil moa shegid e dilekel kwa se siligel mle piviusel membera constitutional asaba erimo sois ra alse e m'adu ndiakamoto merki for example a delegate ra Son Sorol a toobe ma delegate ra Imlig asa erimo member and vice orile ebo e di ndiakal baut ra alse si a kurum a gil eligel state rogui apresent en enyang ngari a kurum e sel bol sen kyo en it's up to them to decide magan speaker moa shegid e kora blaktakl tiang e dilekel ngari aigel procedure bol follow emgo m'tbuk aigel arir sel mal important tiang speaker se idil kora ngi adra la argid kwa se mal klo tutelel e gil ngari shegid kora l'ul sel kanbin le a bo a idaya aigal blur l'mo disay kwa se m'tangaramo mteela ngarama telang ma ngara embol tombele a klo l'ul ndiak tiang adakal olnit ra ogodongela constitutional convention ndi d'ulis shegid procedure misel sis ma constitutional convention m'bloba tetelel emra sula e speaker tiida tetelet tiya albi.
Sula e tigel goonge pas tiya full reading edu oi.
Oi.
Omtok. Tiang namanga ra full reading asan emora JCA committee e waila awera du mora a resolution calendar Flor leader sawal ngut tiya al privilets recognize ra guest gid ngar tiarap I we have a guest one is the young American lady who attend the University of Hawaii Manoa and she is here on her doctoral or PhD program in Palau I would like to ask her to stand we give her a round of applause and welcoming. And keep standing and her helper in Palau is Alilai Rongil she is a private academic lady in Palau and she is working to help agunita gambo doore Alilai ede v'siaplot aru gui. Now you can sit down we already got your pictures so we'll provide you the copy before you go okay thank you very much ngarya adri ngarya kwasol. Ng'a, diador obisra president eh? Ng'a regular member gid the three of you are invited to join us for the lunch this very soon okay thank you. Flor leader. Amutangawulang.
Almolm speaker, adamo almolm m'ngara abil calendar ra 12 m'g'domosha el 3 under ra 12 ba mobile pas ra Housepin number 11 thus 128 thus 13 S.
Okay, segidil segida m'uson m'ala tiya albi ra du abina full reading. Clerk, am iwea taitol.
Housepin number 11 thus 128 thus 13 S. Ya l'udahul da sunmola amomlot ra title 12 rapala national code dan mo modernize update ra corporations law ra blur belaw ma rukte bebi ra ngodlomso del tiya vel introducinga speakers abino Anastasio by request.
Segida blak iwea a clerk tianga by request introduci ngi m'so note kada nga discussion tiya avok avok asaningi l'mora banking ma muska teal e delegate ra m'rgoyo kol chairman of banking financial institution bo do akmusi se ra ueera. Dangu.
Sula me, teal e speaker oi tiya mal katatal doni ngi speaker tiya l'el talagil la l'ekota presidential saen andi ngo giu segidil kora ensmet ra implementation en adra president amle soal watiya le registrar emora under ra FIC e sel gukbal vice speaker adra FIC diakamngarya ku kora a untrir adil tulimesa tiya adra la artir ma members ra FIC owlimesa tiya la emrgo ngaya gil recommendation artir ma tamler gid e speaker segida lemergid e g'demle adobe artir kwa se go moduru ra process segida right the process a president ta girel request emer gamama adra olbi le segida gamama m'usal am almo of follow gigid l'recommendation emrgo g'demorulia amendement l'mora la so segida awal dhayakni ra el speaker ma kauti al la introduce tiya al la almo o amender segidil registrar actar gid al al belaw oi segida speaker kwa di biot el sodel oi ma kuklangia adesulan le ede m'rgo sula.
Ma gabsula e delegate ta m'rgoyo kol mal malklot temem e m'weren m'sauta tokor a banking e di brain m'ungil m'ng tigel goonge m'depas tiya full reading oh halde kabo e delegate abliliu.
Sula e speaker amal sula delegate ra m'rgoyo kol malmula alse du speaker ndibagektu ra tilulau alel kwa se tiya government amla bo lungil merayla ta atetelel e gakid a revenul dimal mesois wa audo el am akluguk e tiya gid atara aigel part l'ulim mo smude mereda atetelela aigal shobaya alru la aigal shobay artir mesois ra alse la blur belawe ma g'domel diawren asaw le e malsoa adre bela m'lodek kwa se egid tiya l'mringa l'orolo motmok osiga wunirolela besudod l'mosois e gil tiya gid tiya gid el bil atara egid el mal klo tutelil bil girad l'mre edel gutmakli m'magutmakli misel m're edel sois ma btokel lungil shobay ma omorolela auriro ra aigal gombali m'ungil a blur belaw speaker, sula.
Kabsula e tigel goonge m'depas tiya full reading edu oi.
Oi.
Omtok. Tianga namnga e asan emora a kamitira banking. Flor leader.
Kwa se speaker edu ku lakel mora 13 resolution calendar ma mo one by one speaker for ease of reference direktel for recording purposes e mo clear arugut kora future ma mo mobile adapt ra House joint no mo mobile refer ra House joint resolution 11 thus 64 thus 13 S.
Segida m'uson el difer cel house resolution emla segedet. Clerk, am iwea ya taitol ueera kasany.
House joint resolution number 11 thus 64 thus 13 S. Ya House joint resolution amo odi omul le olnit tratanga kelsurang Libs Junior ngi president ra blur belaw m'ngodari m'ngodari ia minister of finance and chief representative ra blur belaw ra compact review advisory group ilgirela section 432 review ra compact of free association l'mo osiga agreement talban tri ra ngarbavel adal omte ra blur amrigel ilgirela ngesul ra expert personnel funding programs technical assistance malmutl bebi ra blur amrigel el murato toko era omotmaklel ma m'nguyu la fees el ngara air carriers sel la sebwa air airspace ra blur belaw el dimlakal bekel el dimlakal sebwa el tobad malubeng mlelend ra blur belaw tiya resolution able introducinga delegate Umetaro maruptoy sel delegates.
Segida taitol malblaktakl edikusati elela delegate ra imlig bel kora di overview tiya resolution e di kada mo asan emorin segida ngamoo se ede m'subringi la arongelele kabo e delegate ra imlig.
Sula ra teal e speaker amalungil tutau m'rgau ma our bekel members a we gel blal du clerk el taitol tianga onnit l'mora president el ugui tiya gidil negotiation malubeng alda du lobengela gablament ra amrigel ma bolu kiar tiya gidil toko onnit l'girela technical related expertise ma telela blur belaw l'mo kalekt aigel fees malubeng establish a leakl fees ngil kalekt ra aigel skogil suweb kel mengelakra blur belaw el dio ayakpav kado omesa atul e diakadongu ngi le m'la motrogoklogi aigel m'subir al adra la argid l'osse even though ngari tiya l'wiler gid ra compact of free association as a sovereign nation bi gid l'ovadred ra blwad ngarya l'mlteth el wa btokel blur el m'la ulngil aigel gid el skogil mes suweb kel ogivu blur belaw el mora gukpebi ra blur ngultrukk ra aigel gid l'agreement sel aigel subsidiary agreements ra compact el ossea motrogoklil ossea amrigel a unora is responsible for ra aigel gid l'tigingela aviation safety services provide aigel gid l'girela blur belaw e di osisiul taime ngultrukk klil kwa se it has the responsibility ngarlel provide aigel gid l'services e di elang e di ngiltang amla ulngil aigal el skogil suweb kel mervebul a belaw omsubira aradra la artiagidil toko tigel adra la argid amla m'gatuklil kwa se abtokel blur tiya Asia Pacific region.
...charge for Skogir, the country that is in trouble. Australia is in trouble too. They are in trouble too. The government is not able to handle it. They are not able to handle the situation. They are not able to help researchers who are struggling. They have only one year to go to Australia and Solomon Island. The overflights cost 1.48 million dollars. The fees are more than Australia. And they are not able to pay. Actually, they are not able to pay. The government is not able to pay Solomon Island. They are not able to pay the fees for overflights. They are not able to pay. The president is not able to pay. Because of border negotiating issues. They are not able to pay overflight fees. They are not able to pay for Indonesia. They are not able to pay for the import. They are not able to pay for the import. They are not able to pay. They are not able to conduct a meeting with the Australian ambassador, the Minister of State. They are stressed. They are not able to pay the government. Because the government is not able to pay. Hopefully, they will research the information. They will be able to do it. They will be able to do it. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. Ali Airways is paying directly for Singapore. The boarding pass for Qatar Airways. And the flag for Bhutan. They are not able to pay. 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 They are not able to generate revenue mechanisms. They are not able to pay the resolution. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The boarding pass for Qatar Airlines. And the Skogir for Bhutan. And the Skodjol, the other country. The Republic of Palau. They are not able to pay. 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 The government is not able to pay. The other country is not able to pay. The signature lines of the President are not able to be reached. The other country is not able to pay. The other country is not able to pay. The original resolution was not able to be reached. The other country.
Point of privilege, Speaker.
I will say.
Speaker, the subject resolution. I would like to introduce the Speaker. Basically, that's even better than the committee report. And we are not able to do it. They are not able to do it economically. They are not able to adopt the motion. Speaker, I would like to introduce the other country.
Okay. I would like to introduce the other country. I would like to introduce the other country. I would like to introduce the other country. Oh, Speaker, yes. I am thankful for the confidence of Chairman Idong Marbikla. And I would like to say. I would like to say the other country is not able to pay. The ambassador of Australia. Overall comprehensive research. They are not able to pay overflights. They are not able to pay. They are not able to start the draft resolution. Actually, the draft committee report. The comprehensive information support. Already made. They are not able to pay. The session is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. And I recommend the Speaker since he is already prepared to go. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. Information that we have. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The military is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The other country. The other country, Chairman Gamsong. I will say, Speaker, the motion is not able to be made. They are not able to pay.
No, they are not able to pay.
Okay. Then, the resolution is not able to be made. Tourism and aviation. The floor leader.
Speaker, I would like to say.
The other country.
I would like to say the motion is not able to be made. They are not able to make the decision.
The other country.
The other country.
They are not able to pay.
Okay, Speaker. The number two. I say. Macmullan referred to the resolution 116513s.
The other country. The resolution is not able to be made. The committee. The committee is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. FSM, the military. The Marshall Islands. I will say. The other country.
House Change Resolution Number 116513s. The House Change Resolution is to ratify the Treaty between the Government of the Marshall Islands, Federate States of Micronesia, and the Republic of Palau. The Marshall Islands are the islands of Micronesia. They are not able to pay. The resolution is to introduce Speaker Anastasio by request.
The other country is not able to pay. The other country is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The committee is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The delegates are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The delegates, the floor leader.
The other country. The other country, Speaker.
Speaker. The session is not able to be done until 11:30. We need to move faster, okay? The floor leader is not able to do it.
Oh, Macmullan referred to the Senate Change Resolution Number 1143.
Okay, the motion is not able to be made. Oh. 1143. They are not able to do it. 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 The floor leader. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay.
I say.
The delegates are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. I will say, floor leader.
I say, Speaker, the number four. Macmullan referred to the Senate Change Resolution Number 1144.
The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
Senate Change Resolution Number 1144. The Senate Change Resolution is not able to do it. The Almisel Battery is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The resolution is to introduce by the President of the Senate the Justice for the Constitution of the Senate.
The other country is not able to do it. The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
Oh.
They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. Foreign affairs. The Almisel Battery is not able to pay.
I say.
I will say.
Yes.
Okay. The floor leader.
I say, Speaker, the number five. The Senate Change Resolution Number 1145. It places the adoption. The number two. It places item number two, the adoption.
They are not able to do it. The other country is not able to do it. 1145, the Senate. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it, floor leader.
The number six. Macmullan referred to the Senate Change Resolution Number 1146. It places the adoption, B.
The other country is not able to do it. The school, FSM, is not able to pay. They are not able to pay. The motion is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it, floor leader.
I say, Speaker. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to pay. Since they are not able to do it. Macmullan referred to the resolution 11327s, S1.
Yes, Speaker. The other country is not able to do it, floor leader.
I say, Speaker, the discussion is not able to do it during the recess. Macmullan referred to the action of the House Change Resolution Number 11327s, S1.
The other country is not able to do it. The House Change Resolution is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The floor leader.
I say, Speaker, the adoption. The resolution, B. Item number two. Macmullan referred to the Senate Change Resolution Number 1145.
Okay. The other country is not able to do it. The resolution 1145 is not able to do it. They are 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 not able to do the resolution. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it, floor leader.
I say, Speaker. The number three. Three, B. They are not able to pay. The Senate Change Resolution 1146. They are not able to pay. Macmullan referred to the resolution.
The other country is not able to do it. The Senate Change Resolution 1146. They are not able to do it. The school, Micronesia. The Angeles of Micronesia. The PCC. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do the resolution. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it, floor leader.
The other country, I would like to do 14. The President of the US has not been able to do it. The session is not able to do it. They are not able to pay. House Bill Number 1112913s. They are not able to pay. 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 Item 12, bill calendar.
I will say. 11129 is not able to do it.
I say, Speaker, 1112913s. They are not able to do it.
Okay, the other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it before.
The other country, Speaker, they are not able to pay. They are not able to pay.
The other country is not able to pay. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it, floor.
I say, Speaker, Macmullan referred to House Bill Number 1112913s.
Since the other country is not able to pay. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
House Bill Number 1112913s. The chapter 16, title 17, of the National Code. They criminalize unauthorized distribution of sensitive and intimate images. They are not able to do it. For Title 14, of the National Code. They create civil third action for unauthorized distribution of sensitive and intimate images. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
The other country is not able to do it. The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
I say, Speaker, they are not able to do it. 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 The criminal side is not able to do it. They are not able to pay. Civil penalties. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to do it. 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 They are not able to do it.
Okay. The other country is not able to do it. I will say. They are not able to do it.
I say, Speaker, they are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are unauthorized. They are unauthorized. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
I say, Speaker. They are not able to do it. 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 Let me just say this, Speaker. Already existing law is called indecent exposure. So if you are not able to do it. You fall under that part of the law. Indecent exposure. I am sure the penalty is there. And if you are not able to do it. You are not able to do it. If you are not able to do it. You are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. If you are not able to do it. You are not able to do it. The other country.
They are not able to do it. 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 Oh. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. Communication and transportation. They are not able to do it.
The other country, Speaker.
Speaker. The session is not able to be done until 11:30. The military is not able to pay. The floor leader is not able to do it. They are not able to pay. Skogir is early in the morning. They are not able to do it.
I say, Speaker, the first reading is not able to do it. They are not able to pay. The resolution calendar. The adoption. Place the House Change Resolution 1159112s. Macmullan referred to the resolution.
Second. The other country is not able to do it.
Not able to do it. Motion is not able to do it.
Do it. I say, floor.
Oh, the other country is not able to do it. They satisfy the motion and they are not able to do it. The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The resolution calendar, B, adoption. It places the House Change Resolution 115912s.
The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
Oh.
They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it, floor.
I say, Speaker, Macmullan referred to the resolution. House Change Resolution 115912s.
The other country is not able to do it. The House Change Resolution 1159125. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
House Change Resolution Number 115912s. House Change Resolution authorizing the Republic of Palau to accede to the United States internationally, legally binding instrument for conservation and sustainable use of marine biological diversity of areas beyond national jurisdiction and granting specific authorities necessary to ensure the successful accession of the agreement. They are not able to do it.
The other country is not able to do it. They are 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 not able to do it, floor leader. They are not able to do it. The floor leader.
I say, Speaker, the number 14. The number 15. The communication number 240, 241, 242. They are not able to place Missinnesis Communication 243. The D is under 15. The place is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. Speaker. They are not able to do it. The number 15 or C. No, the number 16, item 16. Missinnesis Business.
They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. I will say, delegates.
The other country is not able to do it. The Missinnesis Communication is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. Speaker, they are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The other country. They are not able to do it. 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 Republic is not able to do it. The Internet connectivity. They are not able to do it. 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 The President of the Republic is taking initiative. They through the Internet connectivity is sold out. Military. The army military is not able to connect the Internet. They are not able to pay the education system. The school in the southwest connects the Internet. They are not able to pay. They are not able to pay. They are not able to do it. Through the system is sold out. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The President, Sir Ronald Whitpe Jr. is taking initiative through the U.S. Embassy. They are not able to do it. The system is not able to do it. The Internet system is not able to do it. Yes, I have a question. The Internet satellite is not able to pay. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The Internet system. They are not able to do it. The connectivity is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. Of course, the other script, the subcontractor military. The installer is not able to do it. The connectivity is not able to do it. The Internet. The schools are not able to pay. The other country.
The delegates are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
Speaker, the slogan is not able to do it.
What is it?
They are not able to do it. The military is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The Internet connectivity is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The school is not able to do it. The delegates are concerned. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The other country.
The other country, the information. I will say, delegates.
The other country, Speaker. Last year, the ATF administered a meeting. They were not able to do it. They were not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. I say, Speaker, they are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. The delegates are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
The other country. The floor leader is not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
I say, Speaker, the motion is not able to do it. They are not able to do it.
The other country is not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it. They are not able to do it.